Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'd like to welcome Sarah LaDarc, who will lead us in our invocation before our meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, if you'll pray with me. Dear Lord, as our nation pauses in the coming week to remember those in the armed forces who have given their lives for our freedom, we pray that you would have us all look to you for strength, comfort, and guidance. We ask you to bless the families of those who have lost loved ones while serving our great nation. We ask you to bless and comfort the walking wounded who are still with us. Be with all those who serve in our armed forces and grant your steadfast protection. We pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. Grant them the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they speak when it's time to speak and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. May they always be guided by the spirit of community, of justice, and of love. We pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who choose to make Milton their home. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, May 21, 2018, to order. Tonight, we have the Sons of the American Revolution in our audience. If we could, Sudi, if you'd please call the roll and make general announcements, and then we'll have you up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call a roll for the May 21, 2018, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to the item being called. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk. When your name is called, please approach the podium and identify yourself by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of an organized group or association, provided the individual has filed a notarized affidavit with the city clerk that they have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call a roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Joe Longoria is absent. Tonight, we are honored to have the Sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Left page. Be off. Again, good evening, everyone. We appreciate you being here tonight. Sudi, if you'll please sound the first item, the agenda.
First agenda item this evening is approval of a meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 18151.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Bentley, second from Councilmember Morick for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous, Sudi. Okay, next item is public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
Well, we do not have any general public comment.
Okay. Then I'll move on to the consent agenda. Sudi, if you'll please sound the items.
First item is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending April 2018, Agenda Item Number 18152, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Universal Engineering Sciences, Inc., to provide geotechnical design services for the State Route 9 court, police, and fire facilities. Agenda Item Number 18153. Next, approval of an intergovernmental agreement for the provision of animal control services between Fulton County, Georgia and Milton, Georgia. Agenda Item Number 18154. Our fourth consent agenda item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia by and on behalf of the University of Georgia, a Georgia land-grant institution of higher education to research and provide recommendations towards the implementation of a transfer of development rights bank for the City of Milton. Agenda Item Number 18155, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia and CH2M Hill Engineers, Inc., to provide green space bond property acquisition services. Agenda Item Number 18156. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia and Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., for trail and park planning and design services. Agenda Item Number 18157. Next, ratification and approval of a retirement agreement between the City of Milton and the Director of Community Development, Agenda Item Number 18158. Our eighth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of subdivision plat and revision approval for 15370 and 15376 Birmingham Highway Land Lot 486 Birmingham Highway Minor Platt, two lots, 2.63 total acres, .76 lots per acre, Agenda Item Number 18159.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Morick, second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi. Okay, next, we'll move into reports, presentations. Sudi, if you'll please call the first item.
This item is a proclamation recognizing Memorial Day 2018. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, it's my honor to present this proclamation for Memorial Day, and after I read it, I'd like to ask the Sons of the American Revolution to step forward to receive this. It's proclamation, Memorial Day. Whereas, Memorial Day was first officially proclaimed on May 5, 1868, by General John Logan in his General Order Number 11, and in 1968 by the Act of Congress, it was determined that the holiday would be observed on the last Monday in May. And whereas, from the opening battles of the American Revolution through the turmoil of the Civil War to World War I, World War II, Korea and Vietnam, to the Persian Gulf and today's operations in the war on terror in Afghanistan, Iraq, and all around the world, the members of our military have built a tradition of honorable and faithful service. And whereas, as we observe Memorial Day, we remember the more than 1 million Americans who have died to preserve our freedom, the more than 140,000 citizens who were all prisoners of war, and all those who were declared missing in action. We also honor our veterans for their dedication to America and their sacrifices. And whereas, we have the honor and privilege of living in a free country, and Georgia has a rich history of great leaders who died fighting for our great nation. Today, all who wear the uniform of the United States are serving at a crucial time, crucial hour, in our history, and each has answered a great call to serve our nation on the front lines of freedom. Let us pray for the safety and strength of our troops and for God's blessings on them and their families and for those who have lost loved ones. And whereas, on this Memorial Day, we honor our fallen soldiers and their commitment to our country and their legacy of patriotism and sacrifices of many men and women who answered the nation's call to duty and fought with honor and valor, and in the end, gave the ultimate sacrifice to safeguard the rights of all Americans. And whereas, by giving their lives in this cause of freedom, these heroes have protected and inspired all Americans, and we are truly grateful for their sacrifice. And whereas, the citizens of Milton join with people across the nation in remembrance of those who died while courageously serving their country during war. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton, Georgia hereby dedicate and proclaim Monday, May 28, 2018, as Memorial Day in the City of Milton, and will call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. And this is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on the 21st day of May 2018. And I'd like to ask the Sons of the American Revolution to step forward, as well as council, and also like to ask anyone else in the audience or in the room that has served or is serving.
If everyone can take a full step this way. Just go. Another step, another step. Just a little bit more. Yes, just a little bit. Yes, perfect. And then if you don't turn them sideways, just a little bit on the ends, that'll be great. If you start in the middle of your form. I do. All right, so, thank you.
Sudi, if you'll please call the item.
This item is presentation of executive fire officer designation to deputy fire chief Matt Marietta. This is being presented by Chief Robert Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm proud to announce that deputy fire chief Matt Marietta has successfully completed the U.S. Fire Administration's National Fire Academy Executive Fire Officer Program. The intensive EFO program is designed to provide senior fire officers with a broad perspective of various facets of the fire administration. This program provides fire service officers with the expertise they need to succeed in today's challenging environment. The four-year program is comprised of four courses: executive development, executive analysis of community risk reduction, executive analysis of fire operations and emergency management, and executive leadership. Six months after completing each course, participants are required to complete a written applied research project to demonstrate application of course theory, concepts, to real-life situations within the student's own organization. Each of these projects are evaluated through a formal process, and progression through the program is contingent on achieving each of these milestones. It is important that the senior fire executives apply what they have learned in the classroom to existing situations in their own communities. According to the U.S. Fire Administration, there are over 27,000 registered fire departments in the United States and 1.1 million firefighters. There are only 4,035 EFO graduates in the U.S., and now you have two of them working in the City of Milton. We are proud of Deputy Chief Marietta and his dedication to continuous learning. The expertise that he brings to the table as a result of this extensive training will serve our community well in years to come. Please join us in congratulating Deputy Chief Marietta on his significant accomplishment. But I would also like to add, this four-year program requires students to attend the National Fire Academy two weeks at a time, and many hours of research to complete the applied research projects. I would also like to recognize Jennifer Marietta for holding down the fort while Matt was completing his EFO program over the four-year period. Matt, Jennifer, and your family, please come up.
I am going to need her to keep those glasses on. If you stand next to her, she will steal your thunder. Full steps over. You're gonna go this way. A little more. Perfect. If you will hold it under, that's perfect. About there, that's perfect. Like the Royal Metting, now. All right, well, look right here. One, two, three, smile. One more. One, two, three. All right, a big congratulations. Thank you. Also, just as important as family, so, and thanks to your dad, he keeps us all safe. All right, amazing. Congratulations. She got the glasses back on.
Sudi, if you'll please sound the first presentation items.
First item is consideration of an ordinance of the City of Milton, Georgia to amend Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages, Sections 4-52 and 4-533 of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia, Agenda Item Number 18160. Next is consideration of an ordinance of the City of Milton, Georgia to amend Appendix A, Section 452, related to Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia, Agenda Item Number 18161. Our final first presentation item is consideration of an ordinance to revise the city's animal control ordinance to allow for the application and enforcement of the Fulton County rabies and animal control ordinances, to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Agenda Item Number 18162.
Okay, do I have a motion on approval of the first presentation?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the first presentation as read by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Koontz, with a second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any public hearing items tonight, so we're gonna move on to our zoning agenda. Will the city clerk please read the zoning rules and sound the first item?
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider a zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures of this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The opposition will also be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and their recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should have already been submitted to the Community Development Department and is included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider this application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of U18-04 VC 18-05 13665 Cogburn Road, zoned T2 by Delfi Adult Community Services for a use permit for alternate senior housing in 64 1844 within an existing single-family residence with an expansion of 2,000 square foot with four bedrooms for a total of eight residents, and construct a new 1,500-square-foot guest house and detached garage, a concurrent variance to reduce the 60-foot primary setback to 50 feet where the house encroaches, Chapter 64, Article 20, Table 11, F1. This is Agenda Item Number 18136, was first presented to council at the May 7 council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
I'd like to, before Ms. Field gives her presentation, to remind the audience that there's anyone that would like to speak publicly on this, please fill out a card and hand it to our city clerk. Has everybody done that? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The summary of the request is as follows: A request for a use permit for alternative senior housing within an existing single-family residence, plus an expansion of 2,000 square feet within the existing house with four bedrooms for a total of eight residents, and to construct a new 1,500-square-foot guest house, and to construct a detached garage. A request for a concurrent variance to reduce the 60-foot primary setback to 50 feet where the house encroaches. However, since the time of application, the applicant has requested a withdrawal of this concurrent variance. And this shows the site, I'm outlining in red. Cambridge High School is up to the north here. The zoning for this site is T2. And this shows a revised site plan that we received on April 16. The existing house is in the front, and then the proposed addition would be constructed in the back with parking in between. The subject site contains 1.472 acres on the east side of Cogburn Road and is developed with a single-family residence and currently zoned T2 within the Deerfield Form Base Code. The applicant is requesting a use permit for an alternative senior housing facility with an expanded existing house with a total of 2,000 square feet. The primary house will also have a 10-foot-deep porch along the front facade. In addition, the applicant proposes to build a 1,500-square-foot guest house as well as detached garage. Based on the applicant's revised site plan, Based on the applicant's revised site plan submitted on April sixteenth, the Community Development Department offers the following considerations. In terms of V.C. eighteen dash oh-four, which is the concurrent variance request to reduce the 60-foot primary setback to 50-foot, it was determined at the design review board meeting, it was suggested that the applicant relocate the addition to the house to the north and not to expand to the west, which would require the reduction in the front yard setback. In lieu of the addition along the front of the existing house, the applicant has proposed a 10-foot-deep porch, which is permitted to encroach into the front yard setback. The concurrent variance, therefore, is no longer needed, and staff recommends withdrawal of V.C. eighteen dash oh-four. In terms of development standards for this alternative senior housing use permit, based on the requirements pursuant to sixty-four dash eighteen forty-four and the Deerfield Form-Based Code, the site plan and the applicant's letter of intent indicate compliance with the development standards for the use permit. In terms of the environmental site analysis, it satisfies the requirement of Section sixty-four dash twenty-four-twenty-six. Arborist comments, the development would need to meet the tree canopy plan required per Section sixty dash twenty-eight of the tree canopy ordinance. Comments from the city of Milton Fire Marshal, the fire marshal has no objection to the proposed site plan. All development plans and building plans will be reviewed by the fire marshal prior to any permits being issued. Comments from the transportation engineer, 22 daily trips will be generated. This does not require turn lanes, based on turn lane warrant thresholds. Driveways, however, do not appear to meet required vertical site distance, and a sidewalk is to be provided due to proximity to school. There was a CZIM meeting held on March twenty-seventh. The applicant and engineer were present at the community zoning information meeting held at Community Place at City Hall. There were approximately five residents who were in attendance. They voiced the following concern regarding the proposed alternative senior housing facility: That the proposed development may mission creep and become larger and may include the property to the south in the future. In terms of the public participation report, the applicant held the participation meeting on April ninth, however, no one attended the meeting. City of Milton Design Review held a courtesy review on April tenth, and their comments are, first, be aware of requirements for accessibility in the new house, in terms of door widths, grab bars, turning radius, radii, et cetera. Possibly put residents in new house instead of the existing house. They also suggested respect the frontage along Cogburn Road, possibly limit addition or build to the side in order to stay out of the front yard setback. And they noted that the area behind the parking spaces requires a 25, 24-foot pullout aisle. Planning Commission reviewed this application at their meeting of April twenty-fifth. Planning Commission recommended to approve the use permit and to withdraw the concurrent variance seven to zero, as recommended by staff, with the following addition to Condition one-C shown in red below. C, to restrict the maximum number of residents, and they added "to be served" within the alternative senior living facility to eight. In the interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, the mayor and city council may exercise limited discretion in evaluating the site proposed for use that requires a use permit. In exercising such discretion pertaining to the subject use, the mayor and city council shall consider each of the following, as outlined in Section sixty-four dash fifteen fifty-two of the zoning ordinance use permit considerations. Staff has reviewed said items pertaining to the subject use and offers the following comments. One, whether the proposed use is consistent with the land use or economic development plans adopted by the mayor and city council. The proposed development is located in the T-two land use category on the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan Update Map and the Deerfield Form-Based Code. The proposed use permit for an alternative senior housing is permitted within the T-two transect zone. Compatibility with land uses and zoning districts in the vicinity of the property for which the use permit is proposed. The subject site is compatible with the adjacent and nearby land uses. Three, whether the proposed use may violate local, state, and/or federal statutes, ordinances, or regulations governing land development. The proposed use does not appear to violate any ordinances or regulations governing land development. Four, the effect of the proposed use on traffic flow, vehicular, and pedestrian along adjacent streets. Based on the type of use and small scale of the proposed senior housing, there will be minimal impact on the traffic flow, vehicular, and pedestrian flow on Cogburn Road. Location, number of off-street parking spaces. We have determined that five are required, and the applicant is providing five, of which one is handicapped. The amount and location of open space, the T-two transect zone allows a maximum 20% lot coverage. The parcel has 1,164 square feet, or 18% of lot coverage, which meets this requirement. Protective screening, the type of use, alternative senior housing does not require protective screening, but staff notes there is a large stand of hardwood trees to the rear and some along the south and north property lines. Hours and manner of operation, since the clients will reside in the house as well as the caretaker, the hours of operation will be 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Outdoor lighting, the applicant has not indicated the addition of lighting on the site. If lighting is proposed, it must comply with Section four-point-twelve of the Deerfield Form-Based Code. Ingress and egress to the property, the applicant has two existing curb cuts onto Cogburn Road. The traffic engineer has stated that the location of the curb cuts do not meet required vertical site distance. The entrances will be upgraded to commercial entrances, as well as widening the existing driveway between the entrances. Staff notes the applicant owner has already received a right-of-way encroachment permit to improve the drainage along Cogburn Road. In conclusion, the proposed development of the alternative senior housing use permit is consistent with the City of Milton Comprehensive Plan Updates, Suggestion of T-two, and consistent with the use permit considerations. This proposal also provides additional choices for housing for the over-55 population within the city. Therefore, staff recommends approval conditional of U-18 dash oh-four. In addition, staff recommends withdrawal of V.C. eighteen dash oh-five. Recommended conditions, if this petition is approved by the mayor and city council, it should be for a use permit for an alternative senior living facility. To the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. And they are as follows. A, restrict the use of the subject property to an alternative senior living facility. Restrict the total square footage of the structures, including the primary existing residence and single guest house, but excluding accessory structures permitted pursuant to the zoning ordinance, to a maximum total of 3,500 square feet. Restrict the maximum number of residents of the alternative living facility to eight. To the owner's agreement, to abide by the following, to substantial compliance with the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on April sixteen, 2018. Also, to abide by the following site development considerations. A, access to the site and frontage improvements shall be subject to the approval of the City Department of Public Works. And also, a stormwater management concept plan shall be submitted and approved by the Milton Public Works Department prior to submission of land disturbance application. And that is my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, before we hear any public comment, are there any questions for Kathy off the bat? Okay, all right, we'll start with asking those to speak in favor. Sudie?
And that would be Ms. Tammy Urie.
Hello, good evening. My name is Tammy Urie. I live at 180 Windflower Court, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30005. We are petitioning for a use permit to Zone one-three-six-six-five, Cogburn, as an alternative senior housing. The agency that we're petitioning for, that I'm petitioning for, is Doffy Adult Community Services, which is an agency that provides residential and day services for individuals, adults with intellectual developmental disabilities. We have been offering services for these individuals since 2006 here in the Alpharetta area. We currently have host homes, and that's where individuals do, it's like a life-sharing, where they reside less than two in a home with a companion who allows them the opportunity to have a normalized life with them. We also have day programs in Alpharetta on Main Street, where we provide social skills and development for these individuals to have a quality of life. The Doffy Adult Community Services is managed by myself, and I bring many years of experience, more than three decades. I'm qualified, certified, I have a master's degree in psychology. I've been working with individuals on this level for a long time. And what we ask you guys is if we could work with our seniors as they are aging, so that they can have a normalized quality of life in the community. Our goal is that the individuals with developmental disabilities have the opportunity to live, participate, and make choices in the community. We are regulated by the Georgia Department of Healthcare Facilities, and we are car-credited.
Okay. All right, thank you. And we may have some questions, we may have some questions. So, additional comment cards?
That's all, sir.
Okay, is there any, in that entirety, there's no more comment?
There's none.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing part, and then I'll open back up to questions or comments from council, to either staff or the applicant. Laura?
I have some questions. Ms. Urie, so first of all, I applaud your passion and mission here. I do want to, I have some questions about the trips. In the report, we had 22 trips. Is that trip count maybe, does that assume that the residents would be driving? Or is there, I mean, can you account for that number of trips in a day?
Well, those are not trips for our residents. That's a type of study that was done by an engineer. The residents won't, do not drive. And it will have less than eight, we're gonna start with, for individuals, but they do not drive. So, the trips will be, 22 a day is very large, maybe two, maximum three trips a day.
Okay.
And possibly, Carter may be able to address that, because to your point, that's an engineering, probably, assumption, isn't it?
Right, so those trips are generally associated with caretakers, staff, people who live there, as well as any of the transportation to get the residents to and from various places. That's a pretty small number, actually, so.
Okay, and I believe you have plans for a van to bring in the residents?
Well, per the requirements, per ADA, you have to have a, when you have eight individuals assigned to a home, you have to have a handicapped space. We do not plan to have a van, but we make accommodations for the regulations.
Okay, and I, in these conditions of zoning, there's a limitation of square footage of 3,500 feet. Is that limitation gonna satisfy your long-term goals for this use on this property?
I believe it will, because our goal is to provide individualized service. We're not into the business of quantity, it's more quality services that we provide. So, if it gets to that level, then we would have to create, I mean, open another service where the demand is, but it wouldn't be at that location.
Okay, that's exactly what I was asking. Because it's, you seem to be on a small scale, because you are nestled in between two residences. And so, while I support your mission, you're also gonna be neighbors to folks that live there. So, the coming and going of the traffic, would that be during regular hours? You don't anticipate late-night drop-offs or anything like that?
No, it would probably, morning activities, shopping on the weekends. Most seniors don't like late-night events, and they're in bed usually before 10 o'clock.
And the caregivers, it was, I believe what I read was that the guest house would eventually be built for caregivers, or?
Well, we're asking, petitioning for the guest house now, we don't, right now, we haven't defined. We have some options. It could be for caregivers, or it would be a nicer facility for the individuals to reside in.
Okay, because what I wouldn't support would be if, you know, the guest house to maybe be a place where additional families would stay, or, because I think that's probably more of an intensive use than that particular property would be suitable. So, I just would want to make sure that we weren't getting into, you know, using the guest house for families to stay over and things like that, because I...
That's not vintage.
Do you, do you have any thoughts on lighting? Or it says in the report that you don't anticipate that, outdoor lighting?
Just the normalized lighting that any other home would have, no extravagant lights, just a front light to walk up the stairs in the evening, lighting inside, but additional lighting, no, just, we want to blend in with the community. We don't want people to stand out, we don't want to be a large institution. Want to be a small, quaint, personalized, individualized care provider.
And also, with signage, do you anticipate any signs?
No signage, that would take away from the normalcy of the individual's residence.
And do you, are you planning for the chain-link fence to stay? Is that, right now, I can see a chain-link fence on the back of the property, will that stay?
We don't have any plans for removing any fence at this time, we're just at this stage. We do plan to make sure it is beautified, and it is maintained and cared for like all the other homes in the community. And everything that we do will be in line with the codes and regulations of the city.
And I would just add to that point, that you do know that, you know, if you do decide to upgrade or remove and replace the fence, it would have to be under the City of Milton's fence code?
Yeah, and, yeah, what's the name of that fence?
Ranch rail.
Ranch rail, yeah.
And the last question I have is, the current ingress and egress, I noticed that the site distance was, maybe needed to be changed. I'm sorry if this is a question for staff, but it looks like it was changed, and I'm just curious, is that what it will be, or will it yet be something else?
I think the other, the husband or the applicant would like, he is an engineer, and he did explain to us how he was gonna address that, so with permission.
Right, based on the preliminary design, we did discover that the site distance didn't meet the requirement, so what we're gonna do is raise the elevation of the driveway to try to meet that site distance when we do the final submittal for building permitting. So, our goal is to achieve that at that time.
So, will the plantings remain the same, so you have to take that out, build it up, and then ref...
Well, what, I didn't hear that.
The plantings that are, that are new?
The current plant, trees that were added were crepe demeris, because we know that over time it's gonna get bigger, and to keep down some of the sound, that's why we planted crepe demeris in the front. But none of that's coming out. That, we put those in place to, for future, and also to start that process regardless of the outcome, but that's the case. But we're gonna continue to, the civil design, once we do that, we're gonna submit it as is stated in the zone here, in that we have to submit all of those things for approval, and hopefully, we will achieve the site distance. I've already raised it eight inches, it was already low when we did the topography, it was already low, but we wanted to raise it, because trying to get out and see that hill from the left, it's pretty tough, and you have to dart out there. So, we raised it eight inches already, and I think another six inches might capture it in elevation.
Thank you.
Great, yep, thank you. Any other questions? Matt?
Have you been working with our city architect on some of these designs?
That's our, we have not taken the design, we have not taken, procured an architect yet on the building design until we get through this. And at that point, we will procure an architect that's local, that's familiar to the... procure an architect that's local, uh, that's familiar to the aesthetics here, and then also work with the city architect to achieve the design, to make it seamless, you know, to do a seamless construction within the community.
Okay, that was all I wanted to know.
Good. Anybody else? Okay, I'd like to, and also commend you on, uh, this, the, uh, uh, service, you know, need, and a great, great service, sounds like you have a passion for that, so, um, commend you on that. Is there any other questions or comments? I'll open up for a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 18-136 with the recommended conditions by staff.
Second. Okay, we have, we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Make a motion to approve.
Well, that's, yeah, I was gonna ask that, okay.
That's the only thing, I just wanted the, the motion to reflect the withdrawal.
Withdraw, based, based on staff com- but I did wanna ask, but first, we got a motion, I think was Councilmember Coontz?
I'll draw the second.
I'll draw my motion.
Okay, all right.
I don't even know what y'all just talked about.
All right, the question I just wanna ask to make sure that the applicant's clear on staff recommendations and, and what, what they are recommending, okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 18-136 with staff's recommended conditions.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Don't.
What? All right, I've got a motion from Councilmember Jameson, a second from Councilmember Coontz. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Sudi, if you would, uh, please call the next agenda item.
Next item is consideration of U-18-06, Green Road Zoned T4, Open by Little Sunshine Daycare, for a use permit for a nine thousand seven hundred square-foot daycare facility, Section 64, 1809. Agenda Item Number 18137, first presentation was at the May 7th Regular City Council Meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Okay, and again, I'm gonna break in, um, after the, the item has been called, are there any other, uh, public com- do we have public comment cards in?
I have two, but the, you have one in front of you, that's a hard copy.
Okay, let me see, I just wanna make sure, there's no one else in the audience intended on, turn it one, okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, it is my understanding that the applicant wishes to request a deferral, and I believe he is in the audience to, uh, so, request.
Okay. All right, um, a- at this point, we can, uh, well, is there any questions from Kathy on this so far? We can have our public comment, and then allow the, uh, the applicant to speak, uh, or if the council's okay, we can do it in reverse and have the applicant, um, speak, so. All right, I'll go ahead and hear the public comment.
So, our first, uh, public comment is before you, and hard copy from Carolyn Etchison, a letter. The other one is from Hodge Patel, but he is not here this evening, so, in fact, we don't have anybody to come up and speak.
Okay, and you say, I'm sorry, do you say?
Hod- Hodge has submitted one, but, um, he said if it was deferred, he would come to the meeting, that it would be, um, considered.
So, that's all the public comment we've got now?
That's all.
Okay, now, I'll, uh, ask if the applicant wants to speak.
Hello, Bob Vance, Kimberly Horn, 2015, Brookton Way, Coming, Georgia. Uh, I am just here to represent the applicant, who would like to have this deferred until June 18th due to personal conflicts, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Are there any questions, council, staff, or applicant?
I just have a comment.
Laura?
Um, you know, I, I hope the circumstances were extenuating, this process has been, you know, publicized, the public has adhered to it, it started in March, so, um, I know that, that puts this hearing in the middle of the summer, and I know this is a, you know, closely followed one, so, um, just for the record.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate that, it, it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Miss? All right, I'll open up for motion. And just to clarify, Ned Ken, that what's before us, uh, I'm opening up for a motion, it could be to approve, deny, or, or defer, correct? The applicant has asked for a deferral, but the council has the option to?
That's correct, so you've had your, you've had your hearing, and there's been a request to defer.
Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd ask that we, uh, grant the deferral for Agenda Item Number 18-137.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Moritz for a deferral of the application with a second from, was it Councilmember Jameson?
Yeah.
Okay.
Point of order, there needs to be a date in that motion.
Give it, we- Deferral till June 18th, 2018, I'd do a friendly amendment to that.
Second agree with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion for a deferral for June 18th, 2018. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, city.
Mr. Mayor, just a, a point of order on that, and I'm, I'm fine with the deferral, but is the expectation of the council when this returns to you that we will have another public hearing? Typically, y'all have public comment, I do view those differently, though. Public hearing is advertised for a public hearing, public comment is just where someone can show up and speak. I'd be interested to know what the council's vision is for what you expect will happen on the 18th.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would like to, to get that too, because, you know, I guess it could be technically, this could be considered the public hearing, and the deferral could just be, um-
That's what I just wanna make sure.
Or, or basically deferring the whole, and, and the next time will be the public hearing, so, what is the intent of the council? Matt, and then Laura?
It'd be my hope that we would repeat the process today for June 18th.
I concur with that, just because some of the comments that the clerk made indicated people did not come here physically, so if that's the case, then I would request that we do run another legal ad, and we do have time to do that before that date.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, if we can move on to our next zoning agenda item, Sudi, if you'll please sound that item.
This item is consideration of RZ-18-04, to amend Article 19 Crab Apple Form-Based Code, to amend Table 8B, Building Unit Function Exchange Rate as it relates to lodging. Agenda Item Number 18138, first presentation was heard by the council at the May 7th, 2018 Regular City Council Meeting. This was discussed at the May 14th City Council Work Session. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, as the city clerk mentioned, we did discuss this issue at the work session, um, last week, and, um, we did go back and do some more work on it, and this looks at the issue of, um, increasing the amount of hotel units per unit. Um, right now, we allow two hotel, uh, hotel rooms per unit, and we are looking to, we are proposing to increase them in both the Crab Apple and in the Deerfield area, and so I'll speak to the Crab Apple, um, in my, um, comments, as they relate to Item Number Three of the zoning agenda, also will apply to Item Number Five, since they both relate to Crab Apple, and they are text amendments within the Form-Based Code relating to hotel rooms. Same with the Deerfield, um, Items Four and Six on the zoning agenda relate to Deerfield, and my comments will s- speak to both of those changes. So, we're gonna start with, um, uh, Crab Apple, and we did do an analysis of, um, uh, some other, um, uh, hotels, uh, that we felt, or B&Bs, as the case may be, that we, we felt would fit into Crab Apple in terms of the size of the acreage of them, plus the number of rooms, and what we would have to change the amount of units to. As you know, we started out, uh, discussing three or four, right now it's at two, and we thought we would go up to three or four. Um, if you look at the first one, because it's such a small size and acreage, you would literally have to go up to thirty-six, um, rooms per unit, not three or four, it's a tremendous increase. Um, the, the, the T4 allows five units, um, the T5 allows nine units, so you see that the number is less when it gets to the T5. And as you head down through the Old Edwards Inn, you'll see that you'd have to do, um, sixteen, uh, if it were in the T, if you did something in the T4 open, and nine if it were in the T5. Um, the inn at the Cloisters, uh, comes down significantly to four and two, the St. Simon's Inn is twenty-one and eleven, so you see this, on, on these small acres with a lot of rooms, uh, it, it really is, uh, requiring a, a major increase in the, in the amount of, um, rooms per unit. Now, what we did also is we looked at, um, the idea of, uh, looking at some of our vacant land in Crab Apple, we have, I'll show you the map in, in a second, but basically, we have a significant amount of vacant land, that's one acre, and then some that's two acres, and so we did an estimate of number of rooms that you could expect perhaps in, in, on a one-acre site, um, and also on a two-acre site, and you see that we, uh, used thirty-six for the one acre and forty-five rooms for the two acre. So, using that model, the exchange rate would be, um, in the T4, it would, you would need, uh, you would need to go to seven, and in the T5, y- you would need to increase the rooms per unit to four, and in the two acres, it was five and three respectively. Um, so, that was a, sort of another way of looking at it to, to give you a sense of proportion here. And here's the map for your information, uh, that shows vacant sites in Crab Apple, the, the green, um, are the two-acre sites, and the red signifies the one-acre sites. See, we, see, we still have some undeveloped land that's-
Are those T4 or T5, or?
Uh-
I think you're missing a parcel.
So, they're both.
Okay.
So, typically, the T5 is like the liner buildings from the center, at the five-point center, at the intersection of Birmingham and Crab Apple, um, and then as you go further out, they're T, they're T4 open, so the, the items that are, um, like the, the green on the middle, the left, that's T4 open, and then if you notice on 140, they even, we, we added in the castle, that's T4 open.
Um, wh- what about, I think they're, we're missing a couple, though.
I'm sorry?
What about the, the one in the middle of Waterside?
And, uh, that's-
That's T4.
T4 open, yeah.
That, but that's not marked, is it?
I'm sorry, what?
Is that marked on, on here?
T4.
Oh, no, not the one that sits in the middle of Waterside, that's T4, so that wouldn't be-
Oh, so T, okay.
Yeah, so that's not eligible, that's permitted.
Got it, got it, got it, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
So, anyway, just to go back, uh, there is the analysis based on acreage and our estimate of rooms, um, and then we can go back, of course, to the actual analysis based on real-life, um, examples, so, um-
If I can add something to this, go, go back one slide? Yes, to that slide. So, part of the difficulty in this is that, um, these types of hotel units are kind of an urban hotel, um, and in a lot of cases, the parking is either provided under the structure or off-site in another location, and so that acreage doesn't get, uh, included in this analysis, um, and so those numbers are probably a little bit bigger than what we would have anticipated, um, and that's, that's a bit of the problem when we start looking at comparing it to existing, um, hotel units. What we were trying to do, and I think the second slide, Kathy, if you go down one, I think demonstrates, uh, a little bit closer to what we're anticipating, where we looked at, uh, the available acreage that was, uh, within the Crab Apple area, and the units, the number of units that we thought might be, um, an acceptable style, size, scale, scope of project, uh, for this particular area, uh, particularly in the T4, and that related more towards the three and four, uh, units that we were asking for in the Crab Apple area.
Yeah, basically, based on more real-life, what we might anticipate, we can only compare to the, the cloistered pro- property that-
Yeah, it's very, very difficult to make that-
Yeah.
-that same type of comparison to existing hotels that are out there.
Right, that's very, as you said, very urban, so.
Yeah, we really felt it was hard to descri- to compare to existing hotels, because as Carter mentioned, the parking issue, um, and, and so, so we, we, we thought this was probably a much better, the one acre and the two acre analysis, to sort of give you a sense, and again, we're estimating number of rooms, but we, we thought that was a, uh, probably, and for Crab Apple on the scale that we're looking at, in terms of, of development, that this, this would be rather close to what we could see.
Okay. Laura?
Um, and what is our height restriction in Crab Apple?
Three, three, three stories.
So, three stories here, and, so either, so four units per acre, uh, sorry, room, worst-case scenario, we get forty-five on two acres with four, sorry. Okay, yep, all right, I think I get it, thank you.
So, is this y'all's recommendation? Because I know last time it was four, so.
Right, and, and we, we wanted to go back and do a little more-
And we talked a little bit about it, we wanted to consider a little more, just to have the advantage there, but-
Right.
Okay. All right, any other questions? So, uh, I believe we'll be voting on this particular one, uh, at this point, um, do we have any public comments, Sudi?
We do not, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll close the hearing, um, and then if there's no other questions for Kathy, I'll open up for a motion.
I have, I guess I have a question, I'm sorry.
All right, Laura, go ahead with your question.
So, were you recommending four units for-
That's what we, uh, last, last week, we started the discussion at four, if you remember, and then you had asked us to look at three, in, in terms of the viability of three, and we actually got to the point where I think that we're looking at even more than four, um, and that, um, it, it, it would, I think, look at more like seven, would, would probably, um, for, for the Crab Apple Form-Based Code in terms of, um, units, hotel rooms per unit.
Well, this particular proposal, we were, we were looking to justify whether or not four was the right number.
Correct.
We had recommended four, planning commission had recommended three, and I think our, our numbers justified that, that four was probably a reasonable number, but you could go higher looking at some of those other types of things, but four would be our, our recommendation from a staff's level of perspective, is that correct?
So, y'all recommending, okay, so four's in the advertised packet, okay.
So, I, I think, I understand now, and I can make a motion.
Yeah. But, but I, I think the issue is that at least four would be sufficient, okay?
Okay, and I appreciate you going back and looking at that.
Yes.
I know it seems like I don't understand, but I think I do, um, that we are, um, that is necessary for the parcels that we have.
Right.
So, thank you very much, so.
Like to make a motion?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for approval of RZ-18, uh, dash oh-five, to amend Article 20 of the, um, sorry-
Oh, four.
Sorry, oh, yeah, oh, four, um, to amend Article 19 of the Crab Apple Form-Based Code, um, Table 8B, Building Unit Function, to reflect and increase, um, in the number of rooms per unit to four.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Bentley, a second, from Councilmember Moritz. Any discussion? Hearing, none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, Sudi.
Okay, um, I'd like to, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, we should go on to, to the Deerfield Form-Based Code in terms of proposed changes, and if you remember, at our work session, we proposed that we change the, uh, hotel-
And Kathy, just for, if you don't mind, just, Sudi, will you read the next one, just for the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all, just call.
This is consideration of RZ-1805, to amend Article 20, Deerfield Form-Based Code, to amend Table 9B, Building Unit Function Exchange Rate as it relates to lodging, Agenda Item Number 18139. First presentation was at the May 7th City Council Meeting and discussed at the May 14th City Council Work Session, Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, uh, thank you, um, so at our work session, we brought to you the, uh, recommendation that we, uh, modified the Deerfield Form-Based Code in terms of hotel rooms per unit to, to move from two, which is what it currently is, to eight, and what we did is, we looked at, um, what would be needed, uh, in terms of hotel rooms per unit for some of the hotels in the Deerfield, um, area, and you, you can see, and we'll start with Hyatt Place, that, um, you would need, uh, four, if it were located in a T5 zone, if it were in a T- If it were in a T6, you'd only need three. And so that goes all the way down. As you get down toward the bottom there, you'll see the Cotton House Hotel, which is the hotel that's going up in Alpharetta, downtown Alpharetta, and then Avalon. And there was a question at the work session about, with a full-service hotel, what are, what could we conceivably be looking at in terms of exchange rates, in terms of hotel rooms per unit? And you can see for Avalon, for instance, if there was a site in the T5 zone that a comparable hotel would be built, you would need 10 units, two more than the proposed eight. If it were in the T6, the eight would work perfectly. The Cotton House is by far the highest density, as you can see, in terms of rooms per the acreage that it's on. And so it would require a rate of 13 rather than the eight. And again, in the T6, it would be 10 rather than the eight. So those are the only, those two hotels are a little over to some extent, but all the rest work very well within the eight or lower.
Okay, any questions on this? Okay.
Now, Mr. Mayor, just to point, this is our zoning agenda. Are we going to open up for?
Right, yeah. I was getting ready to say, was there any public comment? I don't think there is.
There's no public comment.
I'll close it now since there's no public comment. But if there's no other further questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of RZ 18-17-13 text amendment to Article 20 of the Deerfield Form-Based Code to reflect an increase in number of rooms per unit to eight.
Okay. All right. To eight, eight.
That's correct.
RZ 18-05.
Yeah, I think.
So there's a table and there's the text amendment. So do we need to go back to the table? And that's fine.
We're.
So, yeah, I can change the motion to.
But this is RZ 18-05.
Okay, so the motion for approval of RZ 18-05?
Yep.
Okay. To, yeah, to increase the number of rooms per unit to eight.
Second.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, and this is probably my fault, but I just need to make sure that on each one of these, I know that we're sort of consolidating the presentation, but I think we need to at least open it up for the public hearing and then close it, even if they've all sort of already been spoken to. And I don't think we did that on this one.
I think we did. I meant to, I believe I did.
Were you open the public hearing on this one?
Yes.
We did.
Yes, I closed it after there was no public comment.
Okay, forgive me, Mr. Mayor, that's my fault.
Try to pay attention a little bit more. All right, so I have a motion for approval with a second, was it Matt? Okay, motion for approval, Councilmember Bentley, a second from Councilmember Coontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, so Sudi, if you will, please read the next item.
Next item is consideration of RZ 17-12 text amendment to Article 19, Crab Apple Form-Based Code 1.6.4.4b, as it relates to lodging, Agenda Item Number 18140. First presentation was at the May 7th Council meeting and discussed at the May 14th City Council work session, Ms. Kathy Field.
Okay, before, just to double check, do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
On this, and make sure it's open. Okay, you've called it, and we'll close the application for her to take the cards. Since there's no public comment, I will close the hearing. And go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, my comments are exactly the same as they apply to RZ 18-04.
Okay, any questions or comments? I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of RZ 17-12.
Correct.
Text amendment to Article 19 of the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. Are we doing, yeah, Crab Apple Form-Based Code, to reflect an increase in the number of rooms per unit to four.
Second, I have a second from, I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley for approval, second from Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi. Okay, Sudi, if you will, call our next, I believe it's our sixth zoning agenda item. If you would, please call that item.
Sixth item is consideration of RZ 17-13 text amendment to Article 20, Deerfield Form-Based Code 1.6.5.4b, as it relates to lodging, Agenda Item Number 18141. First presentation was at the May 7th regular City Council meeting and discussed at the May 14th City Council work session, Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments are exactly the same as those for RZ 18-05.
Okay, now just confirmed, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and open up to any additional questions. If not, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 18-141.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Coontz, second by Councilmember Jamison. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to our final zoning agenda. Sudi, if you'll please call that item.
This item is consideration of RZ 18-09 to amend Article 19, Crab Apple Form-Based Code, to amend Article 3.2, general requirements, to prohibit gates. Agenda Item Number 18-142. First presentation was at the May 7th regular City Council meeting and was discussed at the May 14th City Council work session, Ms. Kathy Field.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This discussion was held at our work session where we talked about the fact that because we have a walkable, interparcial connected city, that we felt that gates were inappropriate. We did query the cities of Roswell and Alpharetta in terms of their policy for downtowns, and both of them prohibit gates in their downtown area. We've come to you with the first paragraph of this, and based on conversation from last week, we did add a possible second paragraph. So let me go over them with you. The first paragraph reads, "Except for access to or from single-family residential lots, gates or barriers controlling vehicular or pedestrian ingress/egress to or from public or private ride-ways, driveways, or common parking lots shall be prohibited." Now, there was discussion about adding a warrant with certain conditions for residential subdivisions, so we have that language for you to consider as well. And it says, "A warrant may be requested under the following circumstances: For residential subdivisions that do not contain interparcial access or future interparcial access to adjacent, existing, or future development."
Carter, do you want to add anything to that?
I was just getting prepared in case there was a question.
Any questions?
So this language is what is similar to what, you know, what is done in Roswell and Alpharetta? Is that correct?
Yes, the first paragraph, but we added the second one for your consideration as well.
Okay, all right, there's no other questions, I'll open up for a motion.
And for the record, there is no public comment.
I'm sorry, my bad, yeah. It's number seven tonight, so no public comment cards, so I will close the public hearing, and now I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve RZ 18-09 to amend Article 19 of the Crab Apple Form-Based Code to prohibit gates.
Second, I'm sorry, all right, I've got a.
Does that include the language for the warrant?
Oh, okay, and is that amended language from?
Or addition?
Yes. Okay, to prohibit gates with the amended language.
Okay, let's just clarify, all right, so I'll ask, will you take your second back? Second, yep. And Laura, if you want to.
Amend my motion?
Remake your motion.
Okay. Motion to approve RZ 18-09 to prohibit gates with the amended language?
Warrant.
Warrant language.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, all right, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second, as read by Councilmember Morick. Any discussion? Matt?
Yeah, I just want to clarify on that, too. So the warrant, you had the language and it disappeared pretty quickly, so I apologize. Carter, maybe you can answer this. So one of the things, Carter, sorry.
I'm trying to get Dave to put the language back up for you.
Gosh, there you go. So, you know, one of the things that the planning commission had recommended was, you know, that they exclude single-family lots in the language. And I'm looking for it in here to make sure that that had been done. I don't see, that was the warrant supposed to.
No, it's on the very first.
Yeah, on vice of counsel, rather than putting it at the end, he asked us to put it at the very beginning. So it says, "Except for access to or from single-family residential lots."
Gotcha, I apologize.
So it's only if it's a subdivision, they would need a warrant.
I jumped way forward down, I apologize. Okay, that answers that, thank you.
Remember those tests in school?
You know, you have so much information, you just jump way in, so.
Okay, so we have a, I believe, a motion from Councilmember Bentley and a second from Councilmember Morick. Any more discussion? Hearing, none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous for Sudi. Okay, we're, finishes our zoning agenda, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Sudi, if you'll please sound the first item.
First item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 10, to revise the city's grant management policy regarding the approval of grant applications and acceptance of grant awards. Agenda Item Number 18143. First presentation was at the May 7th City Council meeting, Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What we have before you tonight is our grant management policy. The current policy reads that all grant applications will come before the council for approval. And sometimes this causes a little bit of a timing issue because of when the grants are discovered and when the deadline is, we have to actually get the grant in. And so we've, in the past, we've had to call special call meetings to make sure that we meet the deadline and started looking at what other cities do. It kind of caused us to kind of go out and see whatever, what others do. And I polled the city manager listserv, which GMA has, and asked the question, and got back lots of responses, and most of them are that the city manager will approve the application and then later bring the grant award, if it is awarded, back to council for approval. And in some cases, the city manager could award, could accept the grant award up to a certain threshold. And so that's what we're actually proposing tonight, is that the city manager, the policy will be changed to where the city manager could approve the application of the grant, and then if it is awarded, the city manager could accept the grant of up to $50,000. Anything over $50,000, the grant will come to you for approval and acceptance. So I will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Rick?
Question I've got is, when you talk about the $50,000, is that for the grant or is that the match dollars? Because that's the question I've got, is when we get grants, sometimes we have to ante up dollars if in fact it's awarded.
We are saying it's the award. So regardless if there is a match, if it's the full total of the grant is $50,000 or less.
Okay, so the grant $50,000 or less than you, okay.
Yes.
Okay, Matt, do you have a question?
The only other question I have, a lot of times, you know, grants become a strings attached, time to time. So, you know, whenever we've had any question on that, it's been what are those strings attached? You know, Steve, obviously, we trust you from a discretion perspective, that's why we hired you in this position, but the, you know, I assume maybe if there was a communication you can do with us on any potential strings attached or something like that would be appreciative, but that would be not legal, it's just one of those things that would be, I think that we would like to see. So that's all I'm saying.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt that. But then it's actually in the grant amendments that we're proposing as well, is that there is some sort of report that is given that kind of keeps you updated on what's been through the application process and approval, if there's strings attached and all that stuff. So it will be some sort of reporting method on that.
Okay, any more questions? I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make approval that we, a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 18-143.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Coontz, with a second from Councilmember Jamison. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. All right, we'll move on to new business. Sudi, if you'll please read the first item.
This item is consideration of a resolution, ordinance amending the charter for the city of Milton, Georgia, Agenda Item Number 18163. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in your agenda put back it this evening a copy of the charter of the city of Milton, as the council is aware, the charter, of course, is your sort of foundational law. And these proposed edits to the charter is actually something you have seen before. These were edits that we were hoping the General Assembly would take up this last session, and for whatever reason, they did not take it up, and it doesn't really matter why. That's the way we chose to do it. I will say, Mr. Mayor, that we have the authority, by way of home rule, to do all of these modifications ourselves. And so what I have brought to you is, in light of this not being done by the General Assembly by way of simply a local law modification, it was recommended, and I concur with it, that we should just do it by way of a home rule modification under the Georgia code. And so what that requires, and if you look in the back of the packet under this agenda tab, you'll actually see a resolution that has these charter modifications as an exhibit. But the statute to do home rule for municipalities is actually very much like home rule for counties. It requires you to run a legal ad that is basically a synopsis of the proposed changes. You have to run it three weeks prior to the final date of adoption. And then you have to approve the resolution twice, which is interesting. You approve it once, and then at the next meeting, you approve it again. So you have to be really sure you want to approve it, because you've got to approve it twice. And there really shouldn't be any changes between the first and the second modification. So that's the way this will work. And so, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to very briefly go through the modifications to the charter for the gallery? Or, I mean, you've seen all of this before, but I'm happy to do that.
Well, we've seen, but the process is, this will be a resolution, and then it would be advertised, and then we'd vote on it twice.
The advertisement's already running, but that's right. It's going to be, it's going to, we will have an additional approval at the next regular meeting.
So unless, you know, these conditions will be out there and have been out there in most, I would assume everybody's familiar, unless somebody needs to.
And perhaps if the council has any other, then we go through all of them. And again, most of them are ministerial, most of them are typically what they are is to bring the charter into a more consistent, to reflect more consistently the way Milton does its business. But you may have some questions, and staff are here, and Sudi's here, so we can answer your questions if you have any.
Okay, are there any questions, Laura?
Yeah, so it looked to me like they were pretty routine and just some basic housekeeping. I know we added the cultural arts committee, and I just wanted to point this out because in the newspaper, the first item said salaries and compensation. And it's not that we gave us all raises, we are, we are getting paid twice a month rather than once a month, right?
It was a massive pay increase.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure.
No, it was.
It caught my eye.
No, it was to change the frequency of the checks, that's all. There is, in fact, a mechanism by way, local government officials can change their compensation, but this is not the way you do that.
I was kidding, but thank you very much.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure for those watching at home and in the audience that we weren't. But everything else looked like it was pretty much housekeeping, and then we've met all the requirements for notification and so on and so forth, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then if we'll, I'll open up for a motion on this resolution.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 18-163.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval, Councilmember Jamison, with a second from Councilmember Coontz. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Sudi, if you'll please sound the final unfinished business item.
This item is consideration of a resolution appointing Fulton County Department of Elections to act as the municipal election superintendent for a city of Milton's. to act as the municipal election superintendent for a city of Milton's special election to be held to fill the vacated District 1 post 2 city council seat. Authorizing Fulton County Department of Elections as municipal election superintendent to call said special election on Tuesday, November 6, 2018. Authorizing the city clerk to act as the qualifying officer to provide services in regards to qualifying candidates for election to said seat, and to undertake any other such duties as are necessary to accomplish the holding of said special election, setting the date, time, and fee for the qualifying of candidates and for other purposes. Agenda Item Number 18164, Mr. Ken Gerard.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is, of course, a resolution taking the steps that we need to take to go ahead and set up the election to fill Councilmember Hewitt's now vacated seat. So this resolution is not unlike what we have done before, when we have lost a council member midterm. I think Lance Large may have been the one that we lost the last time. We did the same exact protocol. So we appoint, basically, the Fulton County Department of Elections to ask, to act as the municipal election superintendent. We also go ahead and formally call the election, which is one of the prerequisites we have to do. And so this does that. This resolution not only calls the election for District 1 post 1 of the Milton City Council, but it sets the election for November 6 of 2018 with a runoff, if needed, on December 4 of 2018. It also sets the qualifying fee, which is a percentage of the salary, which the qualifying fee here is set at $390. It also provides the qualifying hours that are set for it in the resolution, and also selects the Fulton County Board of Elections as the superintendent. I would do want to bring one thing to the council's attention. In addition to this, we will also have to bring to you an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Fulton County, which will lay out the terms and conditions upon which they will actually run our election. And what I think I had told you previously was, my expectation was, is that would be at no cost just because of the statewide and certainly jurisdictional-wide basis of that election. But I also want to bring to your attention that since we have done our last IGA with Fulton County, they have adopted a policy charging or attempting to charge a 10% surcharge with respect to any election that they undertake. So again, we don't have their IGA yet in the door as far as what they're going to require, but we ought to at least be prepared that they may in fact ask us to pay that as well. Again, I don't have that agreement for you yet, and when I do, I'll see what's in there, but I suspect they may in fact ask us to pay them.
Is it safe to say, though, that based on what the city will save in lack of a salary for the rest of the period, that that could offset that?
It may very well be a wash.
Okay.
With respect to this evening, all I need you to do is adopt the resolution calling for the election and identifying Fulton County as our election superintendent.
Okay. Any questions, or I'll open up for a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve Agenda Item Number 18-164.
Second.
Do I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Coontz, a second by Councilmember Morick? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, not for it? Okay, that passes unanimous, Suti. Okay, move on to reports. Anything the council wants to say before we pull staff and have staff give their reports?
The great group put up all these crosses up and down Deerfield and Crab Apple, and thank God it rained, so Crab Apple was easier, and they actually put in a bunch of pre-holes, if you will, and dug those in, too. It made it a lot easier in Crab Apple. So, a lot of work, and just want to say thanks to all those volunteers, both in Milton and outside of Milton, that came to help.
Okay, good. All right, we'll open up for staff reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Since last I spoke with you, we have implemented the FY18 mid-year improvement, amendments that you approved. We have also begun work on the FY19 budget. Departments are preparing their requests as we speak, and the city manager and myself will be meeting with them through June and July to go over those requests. As far as property taxes are concerned, the legal notification process for FIA liens has begun. If a tax sale is needed, it will be held around the early November. We have not had a tax sale since summer of 2012, so we will see how this process goes, and I'll keep you informed as we go along. And with occupational taxes, with the help of Sarah Ladart, approximately 150 official warnings were sent via certified mail to business owners who have not yet renewed their occupational tax certificates, and we'll be issuing through the code enforcement office citations, if necessary, the first week of June.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also? Okay, items in the queue for next month include the use permit for a performance facility in the northwest quadrant of Birmingham Corners, and that's actually going to the Planning Commission on Wednesday night. And if it's not deferred, you will be hearing it next, in June, your zoning meeting in June. In addition, at that same meeting, you'll hear the deferred application from tonight, which is the Green Road daycare facility. So those will both be forthcoming. We do not have any other text amendments coming through at this point, so it'll just be those two. I will tell you that we're, we continue to work on the unified development code, and also as part of the large-lot incentive, you approved tonight a contract with UGA for the purpose of helping the city implement a transfer development rights bank. So that will be underway very shortly now.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Kathy, I just would like to take a moment. As I'm sure everybody knows, Kathy has taken a well-deserved retirement, and I just want to say, I know not only personally, but also, I'm sure from the council, just we offer you a debt of gratitude for everything you've done. We've been here, what, the last seven years? You've touched a lot of things everywhere. You ride around in Milton, you see something that you've had a big impact in, and wish you well in your retirement, but hope you'll stay in touch, and we just appreciate everything you've done, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. Last but not least.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We had a busy week last week. It was National Police Week. Had several community events, including last Saturday, we had Coffee with a Cop right here at Laurel and May. And then Monday, we had the Back the Blue Blood Drive, and we collected at least as much blood as we had last year, so at least 39 pints. We're waiting for the final. Then we had a Protect Your Privacy shredding event, that was Tuesday, that was very well attended. We had traffic out in the street. We almost had direct traffic out there. So we were very pleased with that. On Friday, in this room, we had the first North Fulton Peace Officers Memorial Service at 10:00 a.m. It was very well attended, and I've spoken with the other chiefs, and we're wanting to make that a yearly event to add to the Police Week activities. And then we finished up with our award ceremony, which was in this room at 6 o'clock Friday. So we're able to recognize several of our officers. So those of you that were able to attend or show other signs of support, we really appreciate that. And those of you that attended the Chipotle Police Explorers fundraiser as well Saturday, thank you for that. On the crime front, we're looking really good. We're down about 26% right now, as of yesterday, on our Part 1 offenses. So, and we're battling low numbers already. So really proud of the work of the men and women of the police department for that. Accidents are starting to trend in the right direction as well. We're still slightly up from last year on overall accidents, but again, we're heading in the right direction there, and we have some focused enforcement going on and some education with our public going on, but it seems to be working.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else staff or council have? Got a Memorial Day ceremony, 10 o'clock at Freedom Park, so hope to see everybody there. All right, and I'll, that'll conclude our meeting. Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
It's on move.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Suti.